All right, do I have a motion to come back in from closed session?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we come back into a regular session.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
A second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? I don't hear none, I'll start with you, Joe.
Yes.
Phil. Yes.
Say yes, Robbie.
Yes.
Dr. Littrell.
Yes.
Bob.
Yes.
All right, do I have a certification?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we certify executive session. We entered into executive session pursuant to several areas of law and that was what we discussed in executive session.
All right, I have a motion, do I have a second?
Just specifically in both the sections that you used, 2.2, 3711, A8.
That was the only one we had listed, was AA.
Yep.
How fast you were going to get doing that.
Just a little more specific.
All right. I will withdraw my motion and make a better motion that pursuant to our county attorney's statement of why we entered into executive session, that was what we discussed and...
Let me help you out, Bob. Can I amend his motion?
I guess.
Amendment to Code Section 2.2, Day 3, 711, AA, consultation with legal counsel.
Yes.
All right. All right, now, motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Start with you, Bob, you so certified.
I vote yes.
All right, Dr. Littrell?
I so certify.
Robbie?
So certify.
Joe?
So certify.
I so certify.
Mr. Chairman, it's not even fun to find out about some of these things and I go back and discuss the ramifications, I can tell you that.
Yep. All right, Robbie, would you do the pledge and invocation, please?
I'll rise. Let us pray, Heavenly Father, we take this opportunity to thank you for this day and thank you for this opportunity together, together. Thank you for the many blessings that you've passed down upon us, Lord, and just ask that you continue to watch over us, protect us, and keep us mindful of our duties. Lord, we ask you to be with those that are sick, shut in, and that are struggling with all sorts of illness and sickness, Lord, just ask that you watch over and protect everyone of us, keep us safe in our travels home, in Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with every due justice for all.
Thank everybody for being here tonight, and we'll get right to the business. Doug, come forward.
Yes, sir.
Speak at the time.
Sorry, I missed the last few.
I think we missed you.
Birth of a grandson, actually, so I'm a grandfather for the first time, so that was a good thing. I just wanted to bring up something real quick since I missed that and you all may have addressed this. I was hoping to hear at some point how the departments and the groups under you were going when you were reviewing. I have heard you have met with different heads from, you know, different services and departments that work for the county as to personnel and, you know, firings, hirings, whatever, part-time. I was hoping to hear some about that. My question here, though, basically tonight was if it became necessary under your current thing about no new hires and such, to fire someone, how is that shaped? You may already have addressed that in your policy as far as replacing someone, if someone had to be fired and that department's already shorthanded, so I just throw that out to you and then ask about that. And also, I would put in a word that keep the rec department in mind, they're got people that are doing yeoman's work right now with the departure of Ms. Manning and all the activities for fall. I know that they're really hard-pressed to keep part-time and other staff and some go off to college and all that, and a lot of us in my age group and younger and older are using the facilities as well as soccer, starting up the football, all the fall activities. So I would put in a word for them as well, and if you could just give me a quick answer at some point about if you fire someone under this system, can they replace that person? That's what I wanted.
I think I could probably answer the one, if someone leaves, you know, it'd be up to the board to approve that position, to replace that position.
Okay, they would approach you all then if they had to fire someone, I mean, something happened?
Well, that would be under the county administrator and under the grievance procedure.
Okay.
And then to replace that position, it would have to come back before the board to get approval, to approve that position.
That's what I wanted to clarify.
All right, thank you. All right, since he's the only person asked to speak, I will move on to payment of invoices. Did everybody get an opportunity to look at the invoices that we have?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we accept and approve the payment of invoices.
I've got a motion, do I have a second?
So move.
All right, motion and a second, any discussion? All right, start with you, Joe.
Yes.
Phil.
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Dr. Littrell?
Yes.
Robbie?
Yes.
And I say yes. Do I have a motion in reference to the minutes of the previous meeting?
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the minutes of previous meetings.
All right, I have a motion, do I have a second?
A second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Start with you, Joe.
Yes.
Phil. Bob?
Yes.
Dr. Littrell?
Yes.
Robbie?
Yes.
I say yes. All right, new business?
Mr. Chairman, if I could, under new business, and I'm not sure I'm in the proper place, I had requested some time on new business to discuss Lawford Fire Department's water situation, and I don't see it on the agenda. Can we add that to the agenda?
Yes, we do that, you just make that informal motion.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion that we add to the agenda under new business, time to discuss Lawford Fire Department's water situation.
All right, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Start with you, Bob.
Yes.
Dr. Littrell?
Yes.
Robbie?
Yes.
Joe Neal?
Yes.
Phil? Yes.
I say yes, so we add that, be letter G. All right, do I have a motion to adopt the consent calendar or and/or is there anything in there someone would like to pull out? These are financials, which includes budget amendments?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the agenda.
All right, a motion, do I have a second?
So do.
Motion and a second, any discussion? All right, start with you, Bob.
Yes.
Dr. Littrell?
Yes.
Robbie?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Phil?
Yes.
I say yes, so it passes. Am I understanding that the wide road is just information only? Is that correct?
The wide road, if I may, we have moved forth with the pole locations, hopefully this week we'll have a map, I hope to have it to hand out tonight, but it did not arrive, so we are moving forward with that project.
All right. All right, C, personal property tax relief resolution, Mrs. Zimmerman, would you approach?
Good evening. I think in your board packet that you received a resolution that I drew up asking for you to adopt the percentage this year. We do have the personal property books finished. The percentage this year came out to be 31.73, and that got it to within $100 of what the state reimburses us. And that money is earmarked to use back toward the citizens on their car tax relief. That's the only thing it can be used for, so I did figure it to get it within $100. I have a handout for you to show you what percentages have been since 2006, to show you that they have dropped each year. It has steadily declined. Taxpayers are paying more money. Sure. So basically, it's just a resolution for you to pass the percentage that's been on the personal property book. We have seen an increase in vehicles valued over 20,000, and this car tax relief only pays for the first 20,000. All over that is the full responsibility of the taxpayer. It was up 211 vehicles from last year, so that, of course, dropped the percentage. But if you have any questions, I just need a signed copy of the resolution if you do pass it.
Anybody have any questions?
Mr. Chairman, I think the board needs to thank Fran for preparing the real estate book and personal property book. She's way ahead of schedule, work was required by law. That helps immensely with county finances and her staff ought to be commended for doing that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Fran. All right, do I have a motion to adopt the resolution and also commending Fran and her employees? Can we do that all at once?
I think it needs to be two.
Two, okay. All right.
I make a motion that we accept the personal property tax relief resolution as presented.
All right.
So good.
Have a motion and a second, any discussion? Start with you, Joe.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Dr. Littrell?
Yes.
Robbie?
Yes.
I say yes. Now, I will entertain the other motion I mentioned. Commending Fran and her...
Mr. Chairman, I move that we commend Fran for the job of putting together the tax information well in advance and doing an excellent job.
All right, I have a motion, do I have a second? Motion and a second. Start with you, Joe.
Yes.
Any discussion?
Excuse me.
Sorry. Any discussion? I know they did a fantastic job, and it's not easy getting all that stuff in. All right, Joe?
Yes.
Phil?
Bob?
Yes.
Dr. Littrell?
Yes.
Robbie?
Yes.
I say yes. And again, thank you, Fran. All right, I guess we open public hearing on the charter communications franchise, Act 627.
Mr. Chairman, I would just advise the board that, you know, obviously we're in public hearing now for approval of the charter franchise agreement. I have reviewed the agreement, negotiated the final sticking points with charter, and we've arrived at an agreement that I think both parties can be happy with. There have been changes in federal law over the years that have limited the scope of what counties can negotiate in these, and I think that's a trend that we're going to see continue, is that localities are going to have less and less discretion on regulating cable TV franchises, placement of wireless communication services and other sort of telecommunications services. That's something that's, it's sort of a balancing act. On the one hand, local control is important, especially with how land is developed in a locality. On the other hand, there's the larger policy to promote telecommunications build-out, especially in underserved areas, so that's sort of what you're seeing, but this provision is kind of standard language, the charter that you have in your packets. A lot of it are standard provisions that you would see in most charters across the Commonwealth, so representatives from charter asked me to advise that they couldn't be here tonight, but if the board did have any questions, they would be happy to come at the next board meeting to answer any questions or concerns that you all might have. Of course, I'm happy to answer any questions as well.
Anybody have any questions?
Yeah, one of the things that kind of concerned me, and it was brought to my attention by several citizens, people that saw it, was the length of time. I think it's a 10-year, it is a 10-year deal we're entering with five years. I just wonder if the county really needs to enter into an agreement for that long a period of time. The way things are changing, are we tiring our hands to new technology down the road by allowing them to have this franchise?
Well, I would say two things to that. A 10-year franchise is not an unusual length of time that I have seen, and second, this is a non-exclusive franchise, so if new technology were to come along, then nothing would prevent you from negotiating a new franchise with a different provider or going with some other technology. It doesn't lock you in. What it really does is it just provides charter with the right to use the public rights-of-way, public streets, public property for placing its, continuing the placement of its cable and building out its system.
Okay.
It's non-exclusive, and it is sort of, it's an interest in real property, which is why you have to have a public hearing to begin with. It's something that we're required to go through this step, but again, it doesn't lock anyone else out.
It doesn't lock anyone else out for any type of other type of communication other than what they're providing, is that correct?
Right.
Okay.
If you were to negotiate, you know, another cable company were to come in as competition, that might be good news for the county and good news for the citizens, since you'd have the opportunity to have lower costs with that competition. You would be, charter would have the option to proceed under their current charter or to take the same terms that we negotiate with that new one, whatever new cable company that might be, but again, you're not really sacrificing anything because you've, it's a non-exclusive agreement that you negotiated.
So it is non-exclusive, okay.
What is their primary service area? Do they have a primary service area established in the county already?
I'm not sure what the extent of their actual physical infrastructure is, but their franchise rights extend throughout the entire county, so they could theoretically build out anywhere in the county.
Any other discussion on that? We will be having the vote next board meeting, correct, to approve that.
You can vote at the next meeting if it's a pleasure, or you can close the public hearing and approve.
All right, go ahead and close the public hearing at 6:32. Chair would entertain a motion if somebody wants to, or we can wait on the franchise.
Are you asking for consideration of a motion to approve this?
Yeah, if somebody wants to make that motion, you know, if we can do it this month and we can do it next month, or however you want to proceed.
I don't see any dramatic changes coming down the road. It'll be approved now or approved at the next meeting, and for that reason, I move that we accept the charter of communications franchise.
Okay, I have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second, any discussion? We could conceivably, if we had enough people to come in and, or other companies, they would have the same option. This doesn't restrict anyone coming forward. Any other discussion? Start with you, Bob.
Yes.
Dr. Littrell?
Yes.
Robbie?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Phil?
Yes.
I say yes. All right, Crooked Road Project, Crooked Road Sign Project. Is there any need for a discussion on this, or just more of information for the folks?
Mr. Chairman, you have the opportunity to enter an agreement with Crooked Road to provide some signage. Your requirements on the signage is to get the proper permits and install those signs if the board so desires.
So the cost of that would be whatever it costs to gain the right-of-way and then into post those signs?
Yes.
It looks like it'll be installed on a sign that's already in place, is that correct?
Maybe.
I'm not sure that we have signs at the proper place already at the interest of the county, but if we do, it could.
I do know that there are some other signs, because I asked Robbie about them, and there's a couple that I have. I know there's one that fakes the gap as you get off interstate and come back towards 52. I know there's a sign right there, you would made...
One at Harmon's.
Harmon's, so there's probably several of them out there, so...
By Crooked Road sign?
Looks just like...
There used to be a sign in Grayson County for Route 58 that said hazard is passing next 28 miles. Now, is that the Crooked Road sign we're going to put in Carroll, or will it be about a different Crooked Road?
If y'all haven't seen it, that's what it looks like right there. I know they've got them in Galax, I got them in different places.
Sorts of bangers.
Southwest Virginia.
Okay.
If you look at the sign too long in Grayson County, you'll run off the road.
I move that we do that.
All right, I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, somewhere through this, I saw that it's costing the county a lot of money for those signs, and Carroll County doesn't have a Crooked Road venue. I mean, what are we gaining back for the money that we're spending for those signs?
Is there, Mr. Dalton, is there a cost associated that we just have to pay for each individual sign, or what was your...
The way I read the agreement is they will provide you two signs at no cost.
Okay.
Your requirement is to find the post and then install them and have the proper permitting from VDOT, so that's a pretty minimal cost.
Okay.
Okay. Is Willard Gayheart's Friday night activity at his place considered a Crooked Road event?
I don't know, I read, I was reading something about him. I was reading about this, and so I'm not sure. I'm not sure about that. I guess we can, you know, if, do you want to make the motion to include the two signs, or do you want to do more than just that?
I'll start with two and see what...
Okay, all right.
Is, are we able to have the, to obtain these signs because of our contribution to...
You are a member of the Crooked Road, 58 travels right through the center of Carroll County, so that's the reason your continued support, I think.
So I got a motion, did I get a second?
Yeah.
All right, I have a motion, second, any more discussion? Start with you, Joe.
I would like to know the, all right, this is discussion, I'm sorry, I'm going to abstain.
Okay. Phil?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Dr. Littrell?
Yes.
Robbie?
Yes.
I'll say yes, and I will add that, you know, there's some, you know, we can look at going forward, other things, this just provides us two signs, and we can make decisions out that going forward. All right, old business, committee appointment, did I miss up?
G.
Excuse me. Excuse me, jumping ahead. All right, Crooked Creek Agreement. Mr. Dalton, you'd like to mention that?
I am certain the Crooked Creek Agreement, we run a concession stand on DJI property up there. Best, we have been falling way behind, but there's very little concessions there. Currently, you can buy a permit fee right off your phone and show that up there, so I would request that we provide our notice and exodus agreement.
All right, do I have a motion concerning that?
The agreement goes to March 14th of 2020, can we discontinue it now, do we have to wait till the end of the period?
It's according, we have been staffing the facility last week, I visited twice, there was one person both times I was there, and that was our attendant, so as a cost-cutting measure, I would just recommend we terminate it now.
Area 6 of the agreement gives either party the right to terminate upon 30 days' notice, and so I believe what's being requested is your authorization to give that 30 days' notice.
Do I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we do a 30-day notice discontinuance on the Crooked Creek Pavilion or...
All right, I have a motion, do I have a second?
A second.
Motion and a second, discussion. I'll have to speak to this, because I used to work for the Department of Game and Fish, and the states all took, or they withdrew their support and allowed the county to do it at that point in time. They used to, the county, I mean, the state of Virginia had someone there each and every year to take care of this, but they saw fit into, just like Slail said, that, you know, you can buy your permit by your phone, you know, as long as you got service anywhere you want, and we're not making that much from that facility, and the state saw fit many years ago, I think in 2004, I believe is when we took this place over. Plus, our recreation folks are stretched thin as it is, and this would help, help that sort of thing. Any other discussion? All right, I'll call for the vote. Start with you, Joe.
Yes.
Phil?
Yes.
Yes.
Dr. Littrell?
Yes.
Robbie?
Yes.
I say yes. Now, the Lawford, where is it, Lawford Water?
Their Fire Department Water, yes.
Yes. You want to discuss that or bring it?
Yeah, back in the spring, I was approached, Lawford's in my district, and I was approached by the chief out there, and they had an issue going on with their well that feeds their fire station. They had noticed that, they had put in an ice machine and that inside the machine was turning green, so they had their water tested and come to find out their water was not consumable for humans.
tested and come to find out their water was not consumable for humans. Um, they took upon themselves to, uh, research this, figure out what to do. Um, they signed an agreement with Culligan Water out of Roanoke, Virginia, to come up, do the study, do the test and put a system in, uh, filters and treatments to make the water usable in their fire station. They did this on their own. Um, they kept me informed in the loop on it and everything and, um, what, what the fire chief is requesting is, um, he would like for our maintenance department to come out and go over the system because they would probably be taking care of it in the future as far as maintenance on that building and their water system. And he was asking me to get the board's approval to allow a maintenance system to come out, see how the system has been installed, how it works, what needs to be done. And so in the future, uh, if anything had to be done on it, our maintenance department would have an idea of what they're dealing with when they get out there. It's a brand new system. They've got it in. They saved, uh, the initial bid on it was 11,000 and some dollars. Uh, Culligan, because they were a volunteer fire department, installed it for $8,600. Um, of course, they were asking for help on that. If we can foresee to help them on it, they did pay for it and, uh, but they, the main thing was they wanted somebody from the county maintenance department to come out, look at it, understand it and be able to work on it in the future. That's all I got.
Mr. Dalton, is that, would that be best for our maintenance folks?
I will talk to Mr. Doughty, our maintenance supervisor. I'm not sure that we've got anybody in their maintenance department that knows anything about, uh, water softeners and treatment facilities, but we'll discuss it and send you an email back about it.
Okay.
It may be something the, the PSA looks at, treats water all the time, that they'd be better suited to than, than the county maintenance staff.
Sure, yeah. They were just wanting somebody from the county to come out and see what they've installed and how it works. So in the future, if they had issues, they would have somebody local to be able to deal with any issues they have with the system in the near future or in the far future.
Do you think that Culligan would be able to provide them, somebody to come out and, I mean, what, or have they done, done the training on it or?
Well, Culligan trained the fire department, their officers and stuff, and I'm sure that whatever we can work out with Mr. Doughty, if, if he would like Culligan representative to be there and, or the PSA, whoever we send out to meet with them, I'm sure that can be arranged.
Lawford Fire Department may be the only squad or, or department that doesn't have county water available to the fire department, so it's a different situation.
Yeah, they, they're strictly on a well. They, they have a well there and, uh, they just, they noticed the, this stuff forming in their ice machine and started testing the water and they found out that it shouldn't even be drank by humans, so they had to do something.
And, you know, they do fundraisers and things out there?
Oh, yeah.
They serve the public?
Oh, yeah, yeah. And, and in fact, just a little side note on that, I was at a community meeting. The community center right behind them tested their water and they're in the same mess, so they're looking to install a system in their building, yep.
Joe Neil, do you have a telephone number where we can contact them?
Yeah, yeah, sure do. Um, I got the fire chief's number in my phone.
Okay.
Can I get that to you later?
Just send it by email or something?
Okay, all right. I, I'll send you his name and contact information.
All right, now, old business, committee, committee appointees, do we have any, any applications in front? I didn't obtain the motion, just pass that by or we can just pass it by. I'll leave it up to y'all. All right, here nothing. Let's move to board member comments. Start with you, Bob.
Um, I had the pleasure, I bought a, an old post hole hand set of diggers at the flea market, uh, and I, I had the pleasure of working with them this afternoon and previous. And we're in a drought situation, whether we realize it or not. The, I, at Shorts Creek, I was in a low place, but, uh, I, I did, uh, I dug through, uh, rock and I got down to about 30 inches before quit and it was dry. And then I got into a sandy place and I went over 30 inches, probably 34 inches, and could have went to China because it was all soft, but it was so powdery dry, you couldn't pull the, uh, soil up out of the hole to put on the, uh, bank. In fact, when you lifted it up, it would fall out of the post hole diggers. So I carried water in a five gallon bucket to pour in the holes and I could get the mud out. And, uh, I, I think as time goes along, I hope this drought doesn't stay on, but as, as time goes long in the future, I think citizens would be mu- much more pleased having, uh, wa- good water sources from the county. Uh, the, uh, uh, believe it or not, I even got a call from a person that had bought land over at Five Forks and he had three wells on the property because he bought a corner into two or three properties and he wasn't going to use any of the three wells. Uh, he was tired of having pink underwear and he decided he wanted county water and, uh, he was tickled to death that he had access to it. Uh, and, and the last thing, uh, Salel, last year, is, is it highway safety monies that we did one request for road improvements, uh, and we had, we could have applied for four. That, that doesn't mean that you're going to get it, but, uh, uh, we really, and, and right now is the time to do it, uh, to make, for the board to take action and identify areas of concern for public safety. Uh, am I, am I correct?
Yes, sir, you are. It's time to start with planning and you are eligible to apply for up to four of those projects. Uh, some of those could be on 52, the safety improvements, sidewalk project down towards the high school, uh, interstate climbing ramp on Interstate 77, and some other projects out there, uh, Badass Hill, maybe it could fit into that or there's a multitude of, uh, projects that VDOT shows that, uh, over time have had accidents on Route 58 going towards Galax. Uh, typically these, uh, exit one, I think, was applied for last year. We didn't have the economic development, uh, enough points to get it funded, but, uh, those and any others that board members in the district who think that would fit the criteria, we can invite the VDOT up and go through that planning process.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move that not only inviting the, the, uh, uh, VDOT supervisor for the area, but could we, I'd like to move that we post an announcement in the Carroll News that asks for input from citizens and, and we really need at our next meeting, identify areas and as a board, take action to submit them. I suppose that even though we're at the state limits us to four, I suppose we could identify six and-
It'd be my opinion that you identify as many as possible and then rank those projects and work through VDOT to see, there's two pots of money, a state pot of money where you compete against every project in the state region, and a district pot of money which you would only compete against the other localities in the Salem District. And from those, uh, projects that are ranked and gather the most points based off the criteria that would be funded in the future projects that you construct.
So it- We have nothing to lose and a tremendous amount to gain.
I think starting the planning process earlier and having those project costs identified and, uh, having board support and the public support would be cruc- crucial to getting those projects.
So my motion is that we have, um, I guess a hearing at the next meeting and also publicize for comments from the public, uh, on suggested, now this is primary roads, isn't it?
Uh, yes. Uh, and it has to meet a certain criteria, Route 58, 52, 221, off the interstate, certain exits, uh, like exit one meet that criteria.
But that's, that's my motion.
I got, I got a, a motion. Essentially, so we have a public hearing, our next board meeting, and that we advertise-
In the paper.
In the paper, all right. So I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Point of clarification, is that going to be next, in two weeks or it'll be the regular in a month? Because you've got to advertise it.
Yeah. The advertisement, uh, Crystal may be able to tell me since I'm the neophyte here, uh, when it has to be in the paper, but the paper is usually printed, uh, early in the week.
Two weeks may not be enough.
Next week's paper.
Say the October morning.
Maybe, uh, and I'd like to amend my motion to, let's do it at the, uh, first meeting in October and that, that gives, uh, people a chance to chew it over and, and we can give some thought. We got everything to gain because the highway department does the background information and so forth. Uh, right, Salel?
Uh, they do. I have talked to Mount Rogers Planning District Commission and they have agreed to help us with the staffing of this and application process to assist VDOT.
First October meeting is actually the 14th.
So the October 15th. So my motion is amended to, uh, to have a public hearing on October, at the October 15th for the supervisor meeting and that we advertise in the paper for public comments and we need to stress, uh, on public, on the public highways, uh, primary road system.
All right, I got a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? I'm sure our member of the press here will be glad to put that in his little notes about the board meeting.
Absolutely. I, I was actually going to recommend, Mr. Chairman, um, upon soliciting for public comment, I think that it would be good to, uh, define, clearly define the scope of those projects that are, uh, that can be included for that funding. Uh, we can get together, uh, as far as you can email it to me or-
Yes.
Mr. Dalton, let's go.
That'll work. That'll work. Any other discussion?
I agree with him, but if it's not clear, we'll have a six, six-year road plan.
Exactly, exactly. Yep, so. All right, I'll call for the question. Start with you, Joe.
Yes.
Phillip?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Dr. Littler?
Yes.
Robbie?
Yes.
I say yes. If you, Salel, if you just would give him some, the information about exactly what were the specific things that we would need to cover, that would be helpful. All right, now, Bob, you do that every time. But Sam, Dr. Littler, it's your turn for your-
I don't have very much tonight. I'd just like to compliment Fran also for her fine work in her office and for the excellent cooperation with the board. Thank you very much. It's a pleasure to work with you.
Robbie?
I would just like to join in with, with, uh, Dr. Littler and thank Fran for what her and her office does to help expedite things for the county. They're doing, they're doing a lot of hard work and time consuming and I do appreciate it. And I guess that's about it.
Joe?
Um, the only thing I have really is, uh, yeah, again, thank you Fran and your office. Um, I want to send out our condolences to, uh, our treasurer, Benita. She lost her mother last week and, uh, just want to give the county's condolences to her. I know it was a tough loss and all that. Um, one of the things that I, I wanted to do during my time is to, uh, address this rumor mill that's going around. I mean, it is wide open right now. Uh, we've had a lot of changes in staff. We've got a lot of changes coming up or we're working on different things to change up. With the rumor mill, uh, I was invited Saturday out to the Lawford Community for a community picnic and before I could get out of my truck, this guy runs up and says, "Is the county going bankrupt?" You know, so the rumor mill right now is very, very rampant. I mean, it is, and you know how rumors are. One starts and the next one's got to add some to it and tell some more to it. And I was like, "Not as far as I'm aware of." But, um, I do, on that, I want to thank Salel, uh, Mr. Dalton, for, uh, taking the interim administrator's position. Uh, he's keeping us informed of what goes on daily up here and, and that's been a big, big plus. Uh, I met with him last Friday and, and told him I appreciate, and he said, "I don't want to bug you." And I said, "You're not bugging me. You're keeping me informed. I don't get bombarded when I get up here to a meeting." But I, I appreciate the job he's doing for us and, and everybody's stepped up. We are in a transition period. I know our HR is getting swamped with, uh, applications, which that, that's going to start pretty soon for people to replace these positions. Uh, just hang on, people. Hang on, please. Uh, all this didn't occur overnight and we can't fix it overnight, but I do, I do promise you that myself and these guys sitting here on the board, we're working on it every day, trying to, uh, make the right decisions so that we can get out of this turmoil that we're in and we can get things going. Uh, I have talked to the, uh, constitutionals in this building and, uh, they seem to be okay with what's going on now. They, they think it's a lot better than it was. And, um, with that being said, I guess that's all I need to say. Thank you.
We got a public hearing we just voted on for the roads. We got a situation in Kena. I'd like to brief you on just a little bit if I could without being out of order. Uh, the tractor and trailers are required to come down 77. And when they do that, we did it because school buses on 52, they can only run 55 mile an hour. So when the tractor and trailers come down 77, they only got two routes to get back over 52. And you pop truck, you burr trucks, grocer trucks, uh, McCraw Trucking, Leary's Concrete, Sires Construction Company, a lot of others come through there now. They cannot make the curves. I've been working with VDOT, she was down, Lisa, Ms. Hughes, Patty and Mr. Phillips, they were down. While we're standing there at one of the curves that we need to work on, tractor and trailer come by and they cannot stay on their side of the road. No shoulder there for a car to get off on. So there are a worry of the situation we're in. If they don't cross on one of them two roads, they have to go down to 89 in North Carolina, come across and come back at 52 to get to Kena. And another problem we're having is tractor and trailers still coming down 52. They've had quite a few of them lately. I talked to one of the drivers, he GPSed, took him off 77, brought him down 52 to make a delivery in Mount Air. Talked to the trooper after, let him go, $13,000 fine he's driving out there with. And it's not all the driver's fault, maybe, I don't know. Just need some better, uh, signage or something up there to really keep them informed that they, not to come down. Uh, then the big issue is our school buses coming up through there when they're coming down and that has been a killer mountain. So, I don't know. Y'all just help us to, uh, come up with some kind of solution, maybe in the meeting next week, I mean, next month, maybe we can get people in and come up with something that'll help in the county. I know Fancy Gap is not the only area that's got a road problem, a worry of that, but we do have. And thank y'all for coming and appreciate y'all's attendance. It takes, you're getting ready, coming out and- It takes, you're getting ready, coming out and you see empty seats, somebody didn't do it. I appreciate y'all that did. Thank you.
We'd like to say, I was just in Fancy Gap the other day and I noticed in front of the service station there, it says, no truck turned around. So people are heading that direction and nowhere to turn around.
That's the thing, you know.
And I also want to thank Fran and her folks, they always do an excellent job on doing their work and I want to thank everybody for coming out tonight and, yes, we have, we have issues going on with the county, but we're heading in the right direction. We're steadily making improvements each and every day and just, and I do know that the Recreation Department is shorthanded. I'm well aware of that and that's why I don't bug them. We just go over and pay our grandsons that they go and play soccer, baseball or football or whatever it is that they want to play. And same way as a lot of the other employees that we have, they're having to pick up slack and we appreciate that they're doing that. It is, and hopefully as the financial situation gets better, we can improve those things. And with that being said, I'm going to turn it over to the county administrator for his comments.
Mr. Chairman, it's time to go home.
I entertain a motion for a chairman.
I so move.
Second, motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Thank you, sir.